Can we all be seated, please? Thank you. All right, here we go. Thank you for coming. Welcome to the June 12th Council meeting, 2013. I'm showing it's 7:35 PM. Ms. R.C.C., will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barker.
Here.
Ms. Darrow.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Monarch.
I would like to ask our council president, Ken Martin, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which I will read the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, bright thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today and every day. Amen.
I'd like to have special thoughts on Mr. Monarch's family. He's right here at the seat.
Are there any changes to the minutes, or do I have motion to accept?
I can make a motion to accept the minutes from the regular meeting of May 9th as presented by the clerk of council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okey-dokey. Moving right along. We, I'm sorry, I had to straighten my papers out here for a minute. We have a financial report tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge receipt of the financial report prepared by the Director of Finance and dated May 31, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this next part of the meeting is always my favorite part where we have somebody that needs to get a proclamation. And we have a very, very fast, good athlete, young lady here with us tonight. And I'd like Taylor to come and meet me in the front for a proclamation. Please. Okay, I have a proclamation for Taylor McDonald State Champion. Whereas we acknowledge that active participation in well-organized athletics is influential to building good character and teaches a wholesome sense of fair play and good sportsmanship among our youth. And whereas, in order to excel in anyone's sport, a young person must demonstrate an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. And whereas, a vivid example of this has been brought to our attention by the achievements of Nordonia senior Taylor McDonald, who won the state title in the Division One girls 300 meter burlesque, and who has also set a new school record. Now therefore, I, Donald Croft, the mayor of the city of Macedonia, to hereby proclaim Thursday, June 13, 2013, as Taylor McDonald Day in her city. And extend to her my personal congratulations, and then also, all from all her citizens, I wish you all the best of luck in the future. That's great. Who'd you got to watch it, Taylor?
My dad.
That's your dad? Hi Dad. Good job.
Thank you very much.
You did a good job. See that? You're going on to college?
Yes.
Which college?
Detroit University.
And I hear that it might be a scholarship, etc. Good for you, Taylor. All right, see you. All right. Next on the agenda this evening after Taylor is public comments. We haven't had anybody sign up for this evening. In order to make public comments, you need to sign up at our sign-up sheet, which is usually right next to the door where you came in. So moving on, we're going to move right into pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 54-2013.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 54-2013 for a third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance creating Section 16123 of the codified ordinances prohibiting nepotism in Macedonia hiring practices.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance 54-2013 according to law.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Ms. Darrow.
No.
Mr. Engel.
No.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Miller.
No.
Ordinance 54-2013 does not pass. Ordinance number 59-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 59-2013 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Dr. James Christosik for an initial five-year term beginning October 1, 2013, for the office space inside the Macedonia Family Recreation Center.
Josephine, I don't think we had a vote to suspend the rules yet.
I am sorry.
It's second and third.
Second and third.
Right. Yeah.
We need a vote to suspend the rules.
You do, you do, and I'm very, very sorry.
No, that's fine. I just pointed out.
All right, do we have a vote to? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we have.
Thank you, Mr. Engel.
Okay.
I won't read it again because I'll mess up his name again.
All right, Angela, maybe you could explain this a little bit for the people that are in the audience.
This was a proposal to fill the vacancy within the recreation center that the Cleveland Clinic left when they moved into their new facility in Twinsburg, which was March of 2011, I believe.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 59-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
No.
Mr. Engel.
No.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Miller.
No.
Ordinance 59-2013 does not pass. Ordinance number 65-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 65 for its second reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance adopting the recommendation of the planning commission and rezoning certain parcels of property from the limited industrial district to the general industrial district.
All right. Moving on, ordinance number 69-2013.
Mayor, I thought we wanted to publicize that there's a public hearing on that, on the ordinance 65-2013, July 25th at 7:15 PM here in the council chambers.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 69-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 69-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an interstate maintenance agreement for the maintenance, repair, and operation of interstate highway 271 and 480.
Just as a quick explanation, this is an agreement with ODOT that says you're going to take care of your roads and we're going to take care of ours. It's a big, long piece of legislation, but that's basically what it says. All right, what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance 69-2013 according to law. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ordinance 69-2013 passes. Moving on to ordinance number 70-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 70-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a master lease purchase agreement with First Samarit Bank with regards to eight new vehicles for use by the City of Macedonia Police Department.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance 70-2013 according to law.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ordinance number 70-2013 passes. John, few words about what we're expecting, what kind of vehicles?
The Cruisers.
Yes.
We already have four Dodge Chargers.
Yes.
And we're getting four Ford Explorers, is it?
Explorers.
Yeah, I believe this legislation is for the auditors and for the bank.
Right. But again, so that people know we're getting eight cars.
Yes.
And those new Chargers, I saw one coming at me down the street and I pulled over and hit. I mean, they just look so good.
Yeah, it's nice that we're getting all new cars because it's been, there were some years where we didn't get any and the fleet was kind of taking a beating.
Yes.
So this is very nice.
So this is a big step.
Yes, this is.
Okay. All right. Moving on to ordinance number 71-2013.
Oh, that's me. Sorry. I'd like to offer ordinance 71-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing directing the Director of Finance to make monthly payments to council members for their compensation in order to conform to the Ohio Public Employees' retirement system.
Before I ask your pleasure, there are some changes, Mr. Deemer?
Yes, if any of the council wish to amend this ordinance, it can be done by making a motion to substitute version two, which should have an indication in the upper right-hand corner with the amendments that were requested in me this morning, so that the motion to substitute this version with this number two version.
Is the difference the starting date?
No, it's adding the increase in compensation for, to comply with the OPERS requirements for contributions.
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion. We need to suspend the rules also.
I make that motion to suspend the rule.
Look, make the amendment first, there's a motion to second, so.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Okay, the amendment stands now, we're talking about version two, so now the motion to suspend the three reading rule, if that's what you're implying.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And you are...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear everyone. To suspend the...
Do we have to?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to read the second version again? Or is it worded the same?
Title is the same.
Everything is the same and it was by title.
Just the title.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 71-2013 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
All right, 71-2013 passes. Moving on, ordinance 72-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 72-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment by the mayor of Michael Plaz to the position of full-time police officer.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 72-2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Monarch.
Ordinance 72-2013 passes. Congratulations, Michael. How about coming up here in the middle and after we do the next ordinance, I'll meet you. There is Michael here?
Michael's off tonight, Mayor.
Oh, he's off, okay. Moving on. Ordinance number 73.
He's real smart.
Ordinance number 73-2013.
I'd like to offer ordinance 73-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance confirming the appointment by the mayor of Richard Lee to the position of full-time police officer.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post ordinance 73-2013 according to law.
Roll call.
Second.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
I will, so I need a second. Mr. Barker.
I'm assuming you're Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Am I pronouncing it right or is it Leah?
Yes, sir.
What's your number one job when you go to work at night?
Go home.
He might be the only one that got that right.
He did very well. He did very well.
Number one job, go home, yes.
Well, no, it's go straight home.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ordinance 73-2013 passes. I'd like to shake your hand, Richard. I'll meet you right there.
He looks like he works out. Huh? Yeah, he's got some guns on him.
Oh, look at the little baby.
Workman's house. Uh-oh.
Welcome to our family. Why don't you introduce for me some of these people? My wife, my wife here, and I. My mother, father, Cameron William, my grandmother, and my in-laws. Oh, good. And brothers, sisters, sister-in-law, brother-in-law, two friends.
Don't bring it back.
Come on up here so I can shake your hand, too. There you go. All right, now don't forget to sign TV, so make sure you...
There's a future council person there.
I'll tell you what, I know she's going to grow up to be a politician. Just want to thank the mayor and members of council for giving me this opportunity. I appreciate it and I look forward to being a part of the community.
What's your background?
I've worked in business the past 10 years and decided it was time for a change and I want to be a part of something bigger than myself and be a part of a brother, so it's hard for me to change.
Thanks for taking this.
Sounds great.
Mayor, Richard scored, I heard from his commander today, he scored 96.6% on the state test, so.
Wow.
Quite impressive.
Quite impressive. Next is, we'll give you a minute. How about a sweetheart?
She got married, huh?
All right, we're going to move on to Resolution number 75-2013.
I'd like to offer resolution number 75-2013 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Okay, just for clarity, help me which one that was because you took something off.
74 was taken off, 75 is Chuck Kozelka.
Okay, so I have, shouldn't it be 70, shouldn't that be 74?
Want to move it up? Change the number?
Well, they said take it off the agenda, but not, not really take the number.
Well, it didn't have a number then, so technically it didn't have a number.
74.
74 is the number. 2013. Very good.
Thank you. A resolution confirming the reappointment of Chuck Kozelka to the Civil Service Commission.
What's my pleasure?
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
I already read it prematurely, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law Resolution number 74-2013.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
Epstein.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 74 passes. Chuck Kozelka has a long career with the city of Macedonia. He was an officer, he was a detective, he served as chairman of the civil service for years, and his experience in all police and fire matters is unbeatable. All right, moving on, we have to add one new piece of legislation.
So, Josephine, should I make it ordinance number 75 since we...
Sure.
It's a motion.
I mean, no, not me.
No, we've got an...
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So you want me to make it 75?
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to offer ordinance number 75 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
We're just going to throw in that, that you wanted to add it to the agenda, too, okay?
Okay.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, enabling the city of Macedonia to participate in ODOT's contract for the purchase of Road Salt for the 2013 and 2014 winter season.
Same.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number 75-2013 by, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Okay, 75-2013 passes. This is to allow us to purchase statewide basis for pricing from ODOT, so it's always a good deal for us. All right, are there any other motions or legal legislative actions this evening?
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the mayor to enter in a contract with American Fireworks Company for a firework display at Longwood Park in an amount not to exceed $8,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, folks, this is going to be a good thing and it's already, the money's been appropriated, so come and enjoy them and I'm sure we'll tell you more about them as the meeting goes on. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend the moratorium on the electronic signs, the signs that are located, the examples of such signs which are located at Dunkin' Donuts and also Walgreens for an additional 90 days for the purpose of putting together legislation to regulate said signs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No. Roll call.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening? Hearing none. Do we have any correspondence for the clerk?
I have one, sir. This is from Principal Wright from Nardonia High School. Dear Captain Ripley, I would like to express our gratitude to you and from the Nardonia community for your depiction of an alcohol-related accident and subsequent trial. The two programs had a lasting impact on our student body and showed them a visual example of what could happen if wrong choices are made. Your comprehensive presentation generated a remarkable amount of response and created thought-provoking dynamics for our students. It was a great opportunity for our Nardonia Hill students to participate in such a realistic and dramatic event. Thank you again for everything that you do to keep us all safe.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report. It's one of the biggest challenges of an elected official to maintain objectivity, yet it is perhaps the most crucial of traits. Objectivity exists when decisions are looked at for their true meaning and not altered by prejudice or mindset. For instance, some people have real strong feelings about keeping things as they were or are. Some have strong tendencies to look at any change with disdain. I can't say that's a bad trait, that's just the way these people are, except if doing that would interfere with doing that which is best for the city, it wouldn't be right. The number one goal is to do that which is best for the city, period. Personal feelings and prejudices are hard to push to the side, but it cannot be about you personally. New ideas and method is how we keep evolving. Some in past administrations have objected to change. Even now they do and they're not even in elected position anymore. It's hard dealing with the cash flow and balancing budget... It's hard dealing with the cash flow and balancing budgets, but in the real world of today, no idea can be poo-pooed. If we can't wisely move forward with decisions, thinking objectively, then we are not doing the best we can to serve those who elected us to serve them by making the right decisions. Some previous administrations have actually placed the city in jeopardy by not thinking objectively. Now the city is stronger than it ever was, and that would not happen if objectivity is ever lost. Perhaps that's why Macedonia was millions in debt. If something new knocks at your door, you are not doing what you are elected to do by not answering or by slamming the door in the face of opportunity. It's the doers who have made us stronger. Whining and procrastinating is not an option. Our old city hall is scheduled to be torn down on June twentieth. We have asked for them to save the trees and the sidewalk. Our fire chief, Tim Black, will be coordinating the fire department demolition training with our neighboring departments until then. So they're gonna use that building, bust up the roof, bust up a wall, maybe where, it's in training in case somebody's trapped inside of a building like that. I was in Columbus yesterday. I met with Josh Brown, who is our legislative advocate for the Ohio Municipal League. The OML represents cities, villages, townships, in our lobbying efforts at the State House. I met with Josh because there's so many things going wrong as far as the way we're treated by the state that somebody has to stand up and say, "This is wrong. What are you doing to help us?" Well, after we talked for a while, he talked to me about being one of the trustees, and I told him, "You got it, just name it." Because we need to be strong, we need to be united, because it seems as though the state is bent on taking away our efforts to run our community ourselves. The Mayor's Association of Portage Summit in Stark County met with the County Township Association, so you had all these associations in Akron in an effort to better understand Obamacare. I believe this is the fifth meeting in various locations we've attended because of the impact on government and its employees this health plan will have. The impact is huge. We cannot spend tax dollars frivolously, so we need to learn how to best administrate this program. This new program is full of fees, it's full of mandates, it's full of penalties. It's not just worrisome to us, it's worrisome to the whole country. So it's very, very complicated to understand, but it keeps on changing. And I'll tell you what, um, there are certain things that they've added in here. For example, it's gonna cost us, no matter what the insurance is, we have to pay the government sixty-three dollars per insured person. That's a full-time person. So we just have to pay them at the same time we're paying our people's insurance. All right, what about part-timers? Oh, well, part-timers, two part-timers are considered a full-timer.
So it's a hospitalization tax?
It's a hospitalization tax, you said it. Okay, we're, we're in, we, we've spent a lot of effort trying to improve communications with our residents and businesses, and we're constantly improving how we communicate. The police department is on Facebook and is now able to send you a text message alert. It's real easy to get this text message alert. Alls you have to do is, the address is eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. So you put that on your phone to who are you texting? Are you texting, uh, Joan? Are you texting Don? You're texting eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. The message you put in is our zip code, four-four-oh-five-six. That means if you get that on your phone, if something were to happen, for instance, when the pipe burst on Route eighty-two, the police will text you. Well, wouldn't that be nice? If you get a text, you're at work, it's, uh, four-thirty, and they say, you know, "Route eighty-two is shut down." Well, then you can make other plans and come home another way if you were gonna come down eighty-two. I think that kind of stuff is fabulous. In fact, we're still working on our app for smartphones, and we should have that ready for you soon. There's so much information that will be available on that app, and it's all extremely helpful and informative, but it takes a lot of time to program it. For instance, the parts of the app, you'll be able to say, "Well, I wanna get in touch with the building department." So when you go into, um, contacts off the homepage, it shows building department, alls you have to do is touch it, and it dials it. If you wanna know who your elected officials are and anything about them, they'll be in there. If you wanna contact your elected official, when you touch the picture, you'll contact that official. It's, uh, it's all very, very good things, like, for instance, uh, you're driving down the street, bam, you hit a chuckle. You take out your smartphone and pull over to the side first, then take out your smartphone, touch the app, and it'll say, "What's wrong?" There'll be a category, chuckle. You hit that. It'll ask you, um, "What's the problem?", and you just text chuckle. And then you go to the next page, and it automatically gives your GPS position. So we'll know exactly where that chuckle is at. So with these electronics, it's not gadgets. It's a way of making us do our job easier and better for everybody. Because if you say there's a chuckle, "Where, on Valley View", that's a big territory. Well, it's over there, you know, there's no houses over there. Again, it's a big territory, but if you have a smartphone and you use that app, bingo, it'll tell us exactly where it's at. Our court receipts for May were thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. I'd like to wish everyone a happy, safe Fourth of July, and Macedonia will have its fireworks display July twenty. And that concludes my report. Moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Okay. There was, um, we, one of the things that's going before planning right now is Menchies. Menchies is going in where, is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
Menchies. It's going in where Caribou Coffee was, and, um, they are before the Planning Commission for signage, and also they would like to have, um, outside seating. So, um, planning has them going back and looking at the outside seating as to how they can make it safer, because the Planning Commission won't go along with it if it's not safe. I have to abstain from the doings on that because of, um, the owner of the company that owns, um, Menchies, and I have had some dealings in the past, so I'm, I'm out of that one. We had several signs that were okay, nothing spectacular, no electronic signs. The good news is that we keep busy on the Planning Commission because Macedonia really doesn't have any open storefronts, and as soon as one comes open, um, boom, somebody's moving in there. Okay, now, one of the, uh, new businesses that's talking to us, and don't forget, it's at the talking stage now, but this is one of those times where you have to do all you can to open the door for them. Don't slam the door in their face, listen to what they have to say, and that'll be Gordon Food Markets. So at one time, we lost tops, we had nothing but Giant Eagle. Very soon, it's possible you'll have four alternatives. So it'll be nice if it happens.
Where do they wanna locate?
They're talking about east of two-seventy-one Bridge. Across the street.
From?
Us, right here. Sears.
Seabird.
Sears.
Seabird property.
Sears would be leaving?
No, the Seabird property.
There's an open lot there.
Okay, the Seabird property, Gordon Foods.
All right, um, any other committee reports? Oh, that's a good idea, thank you. Um, Macedonia is in the process right now of discussions about metal roofs. We have a gentleman that, um, he lives on Valley View, right? North Bedford. North Bedford. He, um, he'd like to put a metal roof on, um, his house, and more and more people are starting to talk about metal roofs. Well, the, the Macedonia Planning Commission has in the past okayed some metal roofs for certain uses. So what we'd like to do is set up a policy so if people wanna replace their roof with metal roofs, and we think it's the right thing to do, they don't have to come to planning every time. You don't come to planning now if you're gonna put asphalt shingles on. Do you have to come to planning for steel? That is the discussion. When I'm talking steel roofs, I'm not talking, um, sheets of steel. Some of these, uh, roofs that are made of steel, you can't tell any difference by looks as far as from asphalt, shake roofs, whatever you might have up there. Everything is made of steel. The good thing about steel, it lasts forever. My first question is, is it noisy? The answer was, no noisier than your asphalt roof is now when it's pouring like hell. So, we're looking into that.
They look nice, some of them, pictures.
Yeah, the pictures we saw, some of them look nice. So what I'm gonna try and do for our next meeting is, uh, bring out someone from one of the companies that manufacture and install these to tell us why he thinks we should allow these to be on homes in Macedonia. Any other committee reports? Moving on, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a short note, there will be some inconvenience over the next three to four weeks due to some road work that we're gonna be doing. As, like tomorrow, uh, Crow and Crow Circle will be temporarily, temporarily reduced to one lane, possibly closed, while we cut down a large tree and do some utility work. We have to move some gas lines and, uh, cable. Also, on Valley View at Park, that road will be reduced to one lane for road repairs and a stormwater project that we're gonna be doing. I will post signs, though, when we're gonna do that, so that, uh, the drivers will know, uh, when that's gonna be started. And once we start that, that should probably take a full week to do. Also, we have a culvert failure on Shepherd Road near, uh, Metalswood Drive. The road is reduced to one lane at that point already. So, uh, as soon as I have the, uh, road salt cut, and that should be done Monday, we will make the necessary repairs and improvements, and, uh, that should take us probably a day or day and a half to do that. So, that's where we're at right now.
You told me the age of that culvert.
Yeah, nineteen thirty-seven.
So that's the kind of things we gotta worry about, folks. That's why it takes us having a good service department. A lot of service departments wouldn't have the capabilities of doing what you're doing, so thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to interrupt. This week I had a complaint, um, and called the service department. Not only did they solve the problem, they exceeded my expectations. It's a little thing for some people, it was a big thing for me, and I wanna thank you publicly for what a great job you did. Thank you.
Jim, why don't you talk about lunch?
Well, today?
Yeah.
Yeah, today we met with the seniors, the whole service department was there. We sat with them, we intermingled, we talked, and they got to meet everybody, and we let them know about projects, if they have questions, whatever they had, they talked. It was pretty nice.
It was good, real good.
Lasted quite a while.
Good.
It was good.
All right, Dennis?
Uh, today we've had sixteen new home starts this year, six additions. We've done two-hundred-and-six point-of-sale inspections. Two-hundred-and-eighty-four zoning letters have been issued. Sixty-three noxious weeds and high grass citations have been sent out, and nine lawns have been cut.
Good. Thank you. Angela?
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to announce our Summer in the City two thousand thirteen schedule of community events for the city of Macedonia. Uh, beginning this Saturday on June fifteenth, we have our community flea market in, uh, on the, in Longwood Park from nine AM to one PM. Um, Tuesdays beginning July ninth through September tenth, we will have our farmer's market. The location this year has been moved to Memorial Park. So we hope that people stop by and visit our vendors on a weekly basis. Thursday, July eleventh, we are hosting Yappy Hour in the side yard next to the Recreation Center. This is a pet-friendly social. Saturday, July twentieth, as we mentioned earlier, we're going to have our summer celebration, uh, complete with a kids' zone, food, entertainment, and a fireworks display. Saturday, August second, we'll have our annual movie in the park. Friday, August ninth, we are going to host Rock the Rec concert featuring Cleveland's Breakfast Club. And Thursday, September nineteenth, we will be hosting the Taste of Nerdonia Hills. So this will all be posted on cable. You can find this information on the, the city's website, as well as the Recreation Center's website. Um, so we hope that everybody, uh, keeps these dates in mind. We will have postcards, so you can take them, hang them on your refrigerators at home, so you don't miss a date, or a time, or an event. Um, we want everybody to attend as, as many of these events as possible. Secondly, I just wanted to recognize two longtime employees of the Recreation Department who have recently just left us. Lillian Prisak began her employment with us in two thousand and one, and she just recently retired at the end of May. Uh, Lillian was a lifeguard, she was a water safety instructor and a pool supervisor. Bobby Corin began his employment with us in two thousand and four. He was a lifeguard, pool supervisor, water safety instructor, lifeguard instructor, aquatic fitness instructor. Um, he held many, many Red Cross certifications, helped us run courses to certify other people, to recertify people. He actually just accepted a position as an aquatics branch chief for the United States Army Division of Military Morale Welfare and Recreation at White Sands Missile Range in White Sands, New Mexico.
Wow.
So, we wish him the best of luck. I thank both of them for all of their years of service, um, and everything that they did for us in our department. They will be missed, and we wish them the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela, some of these events, what's the charge? Like, for instance, the band night, that rock?
Uh, these are all free to the community.
That's exactly what I wanted you to say.
Yeah.
So you're coming up with all these great activities for free. Alls you have to do is have people come.
Correct.
All right, Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick commentary. The, uh, basic financial statements for the year ending two thousand and twelve have been completed and submitted to the state ahead of the May thirty-first filing date. Now the state auditors are here in the process of auditing the statements. And I just briefly had some key financial highlights as part of your, uh, May financial. Some of the things that really stuck up was, uh, the total outstanding long-term liabilities decreased one million, three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars, which was a ten-point-one-nine percent. thousand dollars, which was a ten-point-one-nine percent decrease from two thousand eleven. That simply means that that's basically how much we retired debt from last year. And the total governmental fund balances for the city increased from six-point-seven million to seven-point-five million. The general fund ended the year with a fund balance of four million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, and it was an increase of five hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the two thousand eleven ending balance. These are all, instead of the cash basis reports that we are familiar with, that we use on the daily basis, the accrual, the modified accrual basis is what the GAAP team, our CPA firm, Julian Grube, does, and presents that to the state. But the Family Rec Center Fund ended the year with a balance of one million three hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and that was an increase of two hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars from the year balance in two thousand eleven. And see, the difference is, when you look at our cash statements, the Rec Center on our cash statements might have ended the year roughly twenty-three thousand dollars, but on the accrual basis, what they do is they look at the receivables for the next sixty days that would have been theoretically, if we ended the business on December thirty-first, whatever monies that were due and owed by the, to the Rec Center would have been collected. And those are the differences that we see. But again, those are all positive highlights of what the economy's done and what the income tax increase has done for the city. And one other final note, along those lines, the general obligation bond payments will be reduced in two thousand seventeen from the current average of one-point-three million to four hundred and ten thousand dollars per year as the Safety Center and the Rec Center bonds mature. And that's a discussion that we had previously, that seven, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar hole in the general fund and the Rec Center, when that bond does mature in two thousand seventeen, that money that we're paying currently now will be freed up for other projects or other debt. I want to thank our behind-the-scenes woman, Amanda Gideon, from, I pronounced the name right, from Nordonia Hills High School. She was a senior, and she does operate our camera. And one of the things that I was impressed with, as her senior project she did, she came in and she interviewed everyone, all the department heads and the mayor, and basically did a DVD along the lines for elementary or for junior high school kids of what the city was. And Ken Martin, our council president, was interviewed as well. And basically, the idea was, when you viewed this DVD, you had a feeling of what the departments did and what, how their budgets were, and how, what equipment it was from the Fire Department or Police Department. And I was just blown away. I was amazed. The mayor looked at it first, and he was ecstatic about it. And of course, I thought he was pumping it up a little bit. And when I took it home and viewed this thing, I mean, I just told her today, I said, what an amazing job it was. It was really great. And there's no doubt about it, if you paid someone to do that, and we got it for free, and this was her senior project, it was amazing. It was really great, and I just wanted to thank her, because I know she's going on to college, and we won't have her for a short time. One other last item, we did get that grant, as I mentioned before, Ohio Department of Resources, for Step Outside Grant for fishing. And as everyone knows, I'm hoping we'll see you Saturday. We have a lot of volunteers coming, and basically, it's a grant to get more kids into the sport of fishing. And ODNR, the money from the grant went to some tackle, and it also, Chick-fil-A's gonna come out and have a small luncheon available. And so it starts at nine o'clock. We advertise it in the News Leader, the Rec Center has a flyer up in our messenger, and it's for the first ninety kids to come out, seventeen and younger. And it's gonna be a great event. The weather's supposed to be good, and I hope to see everyone out there. It's gonna be, we're also funded for next year already, so.
And that was all put together by Scott, so thank you. And tell us a little bit about this stuff. These rods are for free?
Yes, and there's tackle, the Zepco four-oh-four comes with a little tackle pack, and then there's, for real little kids, there's a SpongeBob pole and some other tackle available.
For beginners?
That's what I had.
And then, I found a cheap tackle box online, so, and we got a little bit of, some other equipment, and we'll have some rubber worms and some other stuff. So ODNR is very generous on that, and again, their idea is to get young kids started fishing. Eventually, they're gonna buy a license, they hope eventually. And this money is really funded down from the federal government, our excise taxes that everyone pays when they buy any kind of sporting goods, equipment from fishing gear and anything related to that. Federal government collects it, the state has to apply for it to come back, and we have to apply to the state to get it. So great program we found, and I'm hoping to make it a yearly event for Macedonia.
Then we're gonna try it out a little bit in our pond. Who knows, we might get lucky.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Tim?
Yeah, sort of going off of Scott there about the project, the senior project. Amanda's here tonight. She's in our back room, so I'd like to put her on the spot to come out. Please, it's gonna be on our website. It's an excellent project. Come on out. It's very, very nice. So it is being put on our website now, so I wanted to thank her publicly for the job that she did. It is very nice, so thank you.
Good job.
The other thing I have, Mayor, is the reappointment of Chuck Azelka. I'd just like to thank the Civil Service Commission. They do a lot of work behind the scenes. They're not recognized very often. I know Kurt is here, but, you know, they have a police test going on, and the fire tests, and promotionals that they do. There is a lot of stuff going on with those guys, so I would like to say thank you to them.
Chief, can the people of Macedonia who want to watch this advancing your lines or whatever you're doing at the old city hall, can they come and watch, or are they in the way if they do that?
No, they could certainly come and watch. I invited the News Leader to come and take any pictures, and we could be with them. We are doing a joint training with Northfield Center, Sagamore Hills Fire District, and Northfield Village. We split it up into three different divisions, and each department will be handling one of those training activities. As you, everybody saw in the paper, we're doing, started automaticating with them, and this is just another aspect of that, is training and meshing with the different departments when they come in.
And what day are you gonna have that practice?
We're gonna have that. It's gonna start next Tuesday night at seven PM.
At nighttime?
Yeah, we, yeah, that's our department training. We only get three days in which to do that, and that fell on all of our department trainings night, so it actually worked out pretty good. We'll be there probably seven till ten. And it is destructive training, which we don't get to do very often, so.
It's also quote-unquote a commercial building, too. It's not a house, so you don't get that many of those, I would assume.
No, no, we take advantage of them when we do get them. So it was very nice of Summit County to allow us to go in there. They gave us three days in which to go in there, so.
Thanks again, Russ Frye, Nick Costandares. We worked it out. Also, I want to tell you how proud I am that you have created this relationship with our neighboring communities. As far as our fire departments, I think there's more and better interaction now than ever. Tim, thanks.
Yeah, we're certainly working together because of the Ray Sino that's coming in, and, you know, I have the greatest respect for the fire chiefs that we have in place there, and we're able to work together for the betterment. We have a lot of on-shift people that we can utilize rather than, you know, doing the call-in people from home and responses. So they were very receptive to that, and it wasn't very hard to do, actually. We sat down and did it in a couple meetings and agreed on it, and this training is expanding on it, and we're gonna continue to expand it out with some standard operating procedures that'll all be the same. So we're gonna try to do some cooperative purchasing and things like that. So we're definitely gonna remain separate, but act as one in an emergency situation, so.
Very good. Thank you. John?
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for the appointment of Richard Lee. We interviewed him back in January, and he's been going through the academy, so we've been eagerly awaiting his graduation. So we're eager to have him on. I'd like to announce that, I think it was in the paper, we're on Facebook now. I don't know that much about it. We're just starting out, so we're, I'm working with some of the younger folks to get some things on there. I'm not all that well-versed, but I'm learning. And we also have a feature called Nixle, N-I-X-L-E dot com, nixle dot com. You can go to it and sign up for free advisories, alerts, and things of that nature. We sent out a weather advisory yesterday. If there's a road closure, we can put that on there and let people know if, you know, before they head to work, if Highland Road is closed because of a water break like we've had in the past, or Route eighty-two over by Lowe's. So we can put various things out like that. We can put missing persons out when they happen. So it's a feature that we can contact the community relatively quickly if we need to. When you sign up, it asks how you want to do it, steps you through a few procedures. Most of it will be text messages to your phone. You can just get emails. So if you go to it and look through it, you can sign up if you want. If you want to just, you know, wander around it and see what it is before you sign up, that's all there. But nixle dot com, N-I-X-L-E dot com. And we're also on Facebook. So we have a couple things on Facebook, some ordinances, that some people are confused about or don't necessarily remember all that much, so you can look right there and see what they are. You don't have to hunt through our ordinance.
I think more people look at Facebook than read the paper anymore, so.
Hence, we are there. So it's not where we want it to be, but it's a start. We're gonna have to build on it. We're gonna put some alerts to folks if there's areas of concern, you know, break-ins at night over in this particular area, we'll put that out there, and we can throw that out on Nixle also, but people can go there and look and get information.
Good communications. Thank you. Joe?
Yes, Mayor, since the last meeting, I've explained to Republic about their obligations during that strike time to the city and our Service Department and to our residents, and they have responded favorably to meet with our Service Director and figure out what they're gonna do for our residents for that delay in the strike period that they had. Also, I explained to statute of limitations to the folks who were the construction managers at the Recreation Center, and the Canseca Company has responded favorably to that. They're gonna do what they can to identify the problems, and the contractors may still have some responsibility under the fifteen-year statute of limitations for contracts, so that's moving forward, and Jim's gonna be handling it from here.
Good. Thank you.
Nothing further.
Any unfinished business?
I just wanted to ask Jim real quick, are repairs at the Rec Center all done?
We're gonna be starting the roof.
Okay.
That's the final thing we have to do. Just waiting for certain particulars from the insurance company.
Are there other things that we need to do there that are on your list?
Yes.
You got a punch list?
Lights need to be done, gutters, more brickwork.
And you need council's input, or you've got that all taken care of?
I gave some information in regards to the lights to council maybe about a month ago, but it's stuff that we can handle. I mean, the gutters are, you're looking around four thousand dollars for two.
We're just eager to have those things taken care of as soon as possible.
Okay.
That's it?
Thank you. Any new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. I've been talking to Mr. Black and Mr. Golden and you as well about city council in Cleveland have a fund set up, the Courage Fund, for the young ladies that were kidnapped for three, ten years. And so Angela and I were also talking about maybe doing some kind of golf outing or something. Maybe we can all get together and try to do something and put some money together and send to the Courage Fund.
I'd rather send money to our soldiers from the Wounded Warrior Project, actually. I think, you know, I've met people who don't have legs. I just, I guess the reason I bring that up is because I understand there's a community outpour, but at the same times, too, I'm taking a look at folks who are gonna be in serious need, mobility questions, just daily living. I realize the Cleveland situation's very serious, but after all, we are in Summit County, and I do want to point out that our mayor sent a letter to Cleveland Mayor Frank Jackson asking for help. Mayor, have you received a response?
No.
So I have more of a tendency, Rita, to keep our funds at home.
Okay.
There wasn't really a letter. There wasn't a letter for help, it was a letter to pay your bills, wasn't it? To help pay the bills for that water leak?
Yep. In fact, you're not.
You were being nice to ask them to.
Just to update council, because I didn't think of this, but I've actually contacted PUCO. So I'm waiting to hear if they'll answer.
And Joe's involved, I'm sorry.
Well, not yet. PUCO, I made a claim. First of all, the way people are treated with these clear-water meters and being told that, oh, your new meter, you have to pay more. Your old meter wasn't reading right, it was wore out. Yeah, right. And then, some of them are very snotty with our residents, and then, of course, Cleveland water never lives up to their end of the bargain when a pipe bursts. So I have a registered complaint with the PUCO.
Okay.
All right, do we have motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.